Okay, I believe it's 10 o'clock now. Do I have the question? Any comments this morning? If I could ask you. This is our cell phone call. Got mine off. Thank you. All right, the next item is a presentation of our annual financial audit for 2014. Todd Brud here with us this morning. Taylor Brown Hill. Get that report.
First of all, I'd like to thank the court for giving us the opportunity to perform the audit this year. I'd like to give thanks to William, Ty, and all the staff in the county that helped us during the course of our audit. Certainly appreciate all of your help. To refresh your memory, we were engaged to perform what's called a single audit for the county. You have three documents here that contain reports that we've issued. What I'd like to do is just briefly summarize the results of the audit. I'll go over the reports that we've issued. I'll spend a little bit of time going over some of the financial highlights from the year, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to address those. What you really have in a single audit, you really have two separate components of an audit. The first part of our audit is an audit of the financial statements that you have in the county's annual financial report. Second part of our audit is a compliance audit of the county's federal grant award program. As you may recall, any local government that spends over $500,000 in a year on federal grant expenditures has to undergo this compliance audit in addition to the financial statement audit. If you look at the county's annual financial report, page one of that report, you will find the independent audit report on the financial statements. What this report basically says is that the financial statements that you have here are the responsibility of the county to prepare them. It's our responsibility as auditors to express an opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion is expressed on page two. I'm happy to report we express what's called an unmodified opinion, sometimes referred to as a clean opinion. It's the highest form of opinion that we can issue, and what it really means is that the financial statements that you have in this report have been audited by our firm, and in our opinion, they're free of any material misstatements and are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You'll note at the bottom of page three that our audit was performed in accordance with government auditing standards. Those standards require your auditor to do a number of things, one of which is to report on the internal controls over the financial reporting process. That report is included in your single audit report on page one of that report. And the internal controls over financial reporting begin on page one, and what that basically says is that when we're performing this audit, we have to gain an understanding of all of your policies and procedures over preparing the financial statements. If during that process we come across any deficiencies that we consider to be significant in either the operation or the design of those procedures, we're required to report them. And I'm happy to report there were no material weaknesses in the design or the operation of the internal controls over the financial reporting process that were identified. We also have to perform certain tests of compliance with laws and regulations and contracts and grants. That section of the report is on page two. Have there been any material instances of noncompliance that we identified during the course of the audit that would be listed in this report? But there were no instances of noncompliance that were identified. The next report on page three deals with our compliance audit of the county's federal grants. Return to page six of the single audit report. You'll find a schedule called the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And this schedule lists all of the expenditures of federal grants that the county had during the year. The way the compliance audit works, we don't test every program every year. We come in and perform a risk assessment. We select certain programs for testing. We are required to get, qualify for a low-risk audittee, which the county did qualify for a low-risk audittee this year. We're required to test at least 25th of the total federal expenditures. The program that we selected this year was the TechStop program, which had just over $6.7 million in awards expenditures. That program, that was well over our required threshold. We tested that program for a number of different compliance requirements, things like allowable costs, reporting, those type of things. And I'm happy to report we did not have any findings or questioned costs when doing our compliance audit of your federal award program. So to summarize the results of the audit, that's the good news. You've got a clean opinion on your financial statements. You've got no material weaknesses in your internal controls over the financial reporting process. You have no findings or questioned costs over your federal grant programs. The challenges that you have, we'll go over now, are with what your financial statements look like at year end. And I think a good place to start would be in the fund financial statements. If you turn to your annual financial report to page 11, you may remember local governments actually have two sets of financial statements in your annual financial report. One set of financial statements are called the fund financial statements. That's what we're looking at now. They're prepared on the unmodified accrual basis of accounting. You have a completely separate set of financial statements called the government-wide statements that are prepared on the full accrual basis of accounting. If you look here on page 11, you'll find the balance sheet for your governmental funds at the end of FY 2014. See, the first column here is the general fund, and the general fund actually ended up the year with an unassigned fund balance of just under $2.5 million, which actually is a significant improvement over what it had been in the previous year. However, look at page 13, which is the operating segment for the fund. You can see that that was achieved essentially by the $5 million short-term note that was issued during the year that was transferred over into the general fund to meet operating expenditures. Kind of a good, the general rule of thumb when you're looking at unrestricted fund balance in the general fund, it's generally accepted that you want to have at least two months of operating expenditures in your unrestricted fund balance. That's the minimum that you want. Ended up the year, you've got about just under $2.5 million, which I think is probably a little bit over one month of expenditures. So it's a little bit below where you would want it, the minimum really of where you would want it. The real issue that you have facing you, if you look at your operating statement on page 13, you've got the revenues here at the top and then your expenditures. You had a deficiency, revenues under expenditures of close to $2 million for the year. Now, if you've got an unrestricted fund balance of about $2.4 billion, if you continue to lose $2.3 million in your general fund over here, that's not going to last very long. And I think what you did last year with the short-term note can be thought of as a bit of a bad day. It got you through 2014, probably get you through 2015 if everything goes in 2015 like it did in 2014. You could run into problems starting in 2016 if you don't change what you're doing. And I'm not telling you anything if you don't know. You can't continue to spend, you know, $1 to $2 million more than you bring in every year without eventually running out of money. So there's some challenges that you have facing you moving forward in that respect. If you look at your budget actual statement in the annual financial report, on pages 35 and 36. Page 35, and what this statement does is give you the original budget as it was adopted, final budget with all the amendments that were adopted during the year, then the actual results. See on page 35 that your revenues actually exceeded budgeted revenues by just under $30,000. But the expenditures, on page 36, our expenditures exceeded what was budgeted by just under $1.3 million. So what we're recommending moving forward, if you have an opportunity with the $5 million note that was issued last year to kind of fix everything as it was at September 30 of 2014, but you still have to make changes going forward or you're going to find yourself back in the same boat that you were in before. You just can't continue to spend $1 million to $2 million more than you bring in every year. Looks like you've got a pretty good handle on your revenues, but you're going over budget on your expenditures. And what we'd like to see the county do is to come up with a minimum amount of fund balance that you'd like to have in the general fund and adopt a policy. Like I said, usually those things start at at least two months of expenditures in your unrestricted fund balance in the general fund. That's the minimum that most people will look at and consider to be acceptable. That might be higher based on your current situation. I know in the few years that I've worked with the county, you borrowed a lot of short-term money, and that's one of the things that you might look at, does it need to be more than two months? And a lot of times, you might need more than two months of unrestricted fund balance in your general fund. But we'd like you to take a look at your general fund, decide what you'd like your fund balance to be, and then develop a plan to get it there, as well as what procedures that you're going to implement if it falls below that threshold. And I can tell you one thing that I would recommend looking at, first of all, is your budgeting and your adherence to your budget. You've got to adopt a structurally balanced budget, a feasible budget, one where your recurring revenues will pay for your recurring expenditures, and then once you get it adopted, you've got to stick to it. If it doesn't do any good to adopt a balanced budget, you're going to just exceed your budget amount every year. And so that's basically the results of the audit in a nutshell. There is one more item I'd like to bring to your attention that deals with some changes in governmental accounting that we'll want to be dealing with next year, and they deal with changes for pension accounting. And you may have read about this in the media. It's been a very hot topic for a number of years. Under the current accounting procedures for pensions, the way they work now, TCDRS will give you what's called a ARC, an annual required contribution. As long as you pay that ARC every year, which you do, then you don't have a liability in your financial statement. Well, that accounting is changing next year. In order to explain this, if you'll turn to page 37 of your annual financial report, you'll see a schedule of funding progress for participation in TCDRS. Now, beginning next year, the way these rules are going to work, they're going to take the actuarial value of the assets that you have set aside for retirement and compare it to the actuarial value of your liabilities. That number for September 30 of 2014 is your unfunded AAL, which is just over $6 million. There's the fifth column there from the left. So what this means is if the standards were implemented in '14, you would have an additional $6 million liability that would be reported in your government-wide statements. We didn't spend a lot of time on your government-wide statements, but your government-wide statements are the ones that are on page nine and 10. So if you're looking at page nine, that's your full accrual statement of net position or your full accrual balance sheet. Beginning next year, you will have an additional liability that should be somewhere around the $6 million range that you will have to begin reporting in your government-wide statements. So that's a lot of information in a short amount of time, but just to kind of summarize it, the results of the audit were very good, and you've got a clean opinion. You know, we didn't have any findings or questioned costs. Short-term, 2014, probably 2015, you look okay. However, if you don't make some changes going forward, losing $1 million to $2 million every year in your general fund could run into some issues as early as 2016. Does anybody have any questions about the audit or the financial statements? I'd be happy to talk about those.
I think what Mr. Brud has been telling us is that the numbers here are accurate. They didn't say that we're good. He's told us we've got to push a bit more money, we're taking it in. And that's the priority one for me. Last year, we borrowed $5 million just to cover our deficit. And the reason why it is fund balance is positive is because of that. Well, without cuts, spending revenue from additional inmates or from whatever source, we're going to be in the same terrible position we've been in in the past. Last year, we raised taxes, but that was to create revenues or revenue, money to pay for our deficit. But we didn't raise O&amp;M, so we didn't have anything to make this year any better. So there's no reason to think that things are going to get better because we didn't have any additional money this year. We've got some inmates, and that's going to help, but we won't start getting any money from that until May. So it's going to be tough this year. And, you know, we had employees that took a 15% pay cut last year. That is tough, also one is living paycheck to paycheck without a 15% cut. So we're looking for whatever we can to be able to afford to restore that of cuts. And we've got some offices that are really short of employees, and hopefully we can help that. But we, like I said before, we've got no revenue, revenue is paper. But the upcoming budget process, we're going to address those issues in October of what we've got to have in order to provide the minimum amount of adequate service to our citizens. And then we've got some, we've got some issues with roads, y'all all know what it's been like on the road. We have cut those departments. We've still got road complaints on the courthouse. We've got, we've got some, some issues that have to be dealt with, but while working together, we're going to be able to figure out how to get this right and put it forward. The main thing, we've got to push a bit more, we're taking it in.
Any comments if you need to come in.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a safe trip.
Thanks.
All right, the next item is considered take action to abandon a proposed road between Hager Lane and Lonnie Lane that we talked about in purchase of the public hearing. Does I hear a motion on dealing with that issue?
I think I did make a motion that we abandoned the proposed road at Hager Lane and Lonnie Lane as per the attached legal description that we reviewed.
I want to pay buck to Commissioner Stoll's here. Second.
I'll second.
Second, I'd like to, Mr. Carter, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. Next item, considered take action to exempt the first quarter, first quarter activity report from Constable George Hayes. Go ahead. There it is. Anyone has a report and any questions?
I have a slow motion, a little mark, and a lot of the rain.
Hear motion be approved?
I'm not sure we approve Constable Hayes' report.
Motion, Mr. Carter, is that second?
Second.
Who's that?
I'll second.
Second, I'm not, I want you to black, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed. Constable Cottle is here. Can you hear his report?
Yeah, my report also.
Okay. Any questions about that report? Does I hear motion be approved? So moved.
Second.
I'll put wait in second. It's approved, the active report from Constable Lobby Cottle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed. Next item, considered take action to reaffirm that the county judge is a member of the interlocal advisory committee. Does I hear your motion, does that be approved?
So moved.
Motion made and approved.
I couldn't tell which one it was.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed. The next is considered discuss the financial review of the Pleasant Grove Emergency Service District, Number 3, for the period ending 12 through 30th of July.
Judge, this is not an action item. It's just, I wanted to explain to you what I do for some of the fire departments. They bring their books in. I review their bank statements, their checkbooks, look at all their expenses. They bring invoices in. I review that, and then what I do is prepare a statement of cash flow for them, and then they present that to their board. For Pleasant Grove, I just finished theirs for the year ending December 3, 1st through 12. And like I say, it's not an action item. It's just an item that lets y'all know what I have worked on for this fire department and the other one that I listed here, too.
Is this an ESD that has a sales tax?
Yes. That's water tax, yes. And I review those. They get statements from the appraisal district, and I review those and tie that revenue back to their bank statements.
Is that the only ESD we have?
No, there's Redwater, too.
That's right.
Those are the two that I look at, yes.
C-5.
Yeah, right.
C-5. And then it's going to be, they're working on it, yeah.
So both of those are no action items?
No, there's no action, just approved. And we can go to item nine if you like, and do the same thing for Redwater Volunteer Fire Department. They also collect payroll taxes. I review their bank statements, receipts, invoices, and then also prepare them a statement that they present to their board that is a cash flow statement, so. And I've already talked to Redwater. They picked their statement up. I haven't contacted Pleasant Grove, but they will pick theirs up, send that contact.
Good, thank you. The next item is considered take action regarding checks written for jury fund.
That's another item. Recently, we had, we have a checking account called the Jury Fund. In the last two months, there were some bogus checks written on that account.
Fraudulent checks.
Pardon? Fraudulent, fraudulent, written on that account. Luckily, the bank caught those, and the county did not suffer any liability because of it. The bank, though, going forward, is going to require us to review that on a daily basis to make sure there aren't any fraudulent checks being written. So what we're, what we're considering is instead of writing checks to jurors, we would like to start issuing cash to them. And we worked out a procedure with the treasurer's office and the district clerk's office and my office, so there's three offices involved, so there are controls there. But the problem that we run into is we're picking a jury tomorrow, or there's a jury pool coming in. We could approve that check today and have cash ready to pay those jurors, but the problem comes in if next week there's another jury pool, and we haven't gotten approval from the court to issue a check out of the operating fund to pay those jurors. What I would like to do is get the court's approval to write checks whenever a jury comes in without court approval. We'll bring it to the next nearest court for the approval, but go ahead and write checks so we can have cash available to pay the jurors. And like I say, there's three departments involved, so there are controls between the three of us, but the only way we can do it is with y'all's approval. We can't write a check or issue a check without court approval, and if you give us prior approval to do that, then we can do it. So that's what we're asking for.
Well, we have, we'll have two department heads dealing with that.
We have two department heads, the treasurer and the district clerk. We've, we've done it to where there will be a minimal amount of cash left at the courthouse overnight.
And that will be in a safe area?
That will be in a safe area, and it will be on the first night. In other words, Donna will get cash today for the jurors that come in tomorrow. The district clerk will lock that cash up tonight. Now, after they pay the jurors tomorrow, that remaining cash will go back to Donna, and it will go back into the bank. It's not like we're going to have a cash fund here that stays in the courthouse all the time that we're going to be paying these jurors from. It's just going to be a one-night thing.
If the trial lasts more than one day, carries over?
She'll have to go back to the bank again.
Each day?
That's correct.
Do this process every day?
That's correct. It will be up to the district clerk's office to make sure that the jurors get paid. They sign off on their payment, and that sign-off sheet comes back to Donna, and they balance between the two, the two offices. And Donna makes sure she gets, gets back exactly what was not paid out and goes back to the bank.
And this is just to make sure that we don't get hacked on our checking account?
That's exactly right, yeah.
What happened on that, just to further elaborate, that we had somebody that made a fraudulent check, or fraudulent checks, large numbers, and the bank paid it, but the bank said, okay, enough's enough. We're going to have to do something differently, or you're going, the liability's going to be yours. Right now, we haven't really lost anything, but the bank has. So that's the reason for this change.
It was our bank that lost it, correct? We understand, they paid the check, and then tried to draw it on our bank.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, it was the banks up north in Boston. Our bank bought it, and they stopped them.
That's what I thought you said.
Yeah, so our bank wasn't having anything, but they're requiring us to either do the positive pay, which is a daily look at the bank account, or if we're going to do this catch, but we have to do something.
And they had to beat them 11:30 every day?
You'd have to, yeah, you'd have to log on every day by 11:30 and look at the checks and say, this check range or this check number is good, push it over there to be paid. It has to be done every day before 11:30. It will kick the checks back, but the bank said they can push them back one more time, but then after the second time, then, you know, and it will go back, it would go back on the customer, you know, the juror, rather, because they would have deposited. If they got kicked back, then they would be charged, and we don't need that to happen.
So what we're wanting is permission from the court to do these checks whenever we need one. As we do them, say, we do one next week, it will show up in the accounts payable in the next court, and y'all will approve it. It will be part of the payables then, but what we'd like to do is have prior approval so that we wouldn't do those checks.
And we can give you blanket approval to do this on repetitious basis?
Right. But that's up to the court.
Could we not set up with a local bank to do this, and so we can continue to write checks and have checks in balance other than cash that's been going out?
Donna?
The problem you would run into, if you try to open a checking account at another bank, I feel like, you know, we have a depository contract with Bank Corp. If you go to another bank, I think you're going to run into fees. They will probably charge fees for that checking account where we're not charged, we're just charged a blanket analysis charge each month. So I don't know if that would really work. You know, when we get the benefits from a depository contract, we wouldn't get that at another bank. Your two options here really are the priority, the positive pay, where you log in each day and you approve those checks. It would take maybe 10 minutes of your time to do it, but there needs to be a dual control where if my office, if I uploaded that group of checks to be paid from that checking account, then another office needs to be the ones to go in and say that check's good. You know, just like we do on payroll, I upload everything, the auditor's office submits it. So you need a dual control. The cash, doing this cash, when they have the juror, this is what I want to do. They're supposed to get me a list by 3 o'clock on Monday for Tuesday. I'll go to the bank, take that list with me, tell them how much I need, and it had to be in increments, like tomorrow will be $6, and it'd be fives and ones. I'm going to have the bank count it in front of me, they'll sign off on it, put it in a lock bag, I bring the bag. The bank will unlock the bag, then they'll count it again back to me to make sure it matched what I left here with. So it's going to, it's going to be a process. But then back on the front side of that, there's going to be a check issued for that amount that I'm going to get from the bank. So, and it will be in a lock bag from there to here and here to there. May I ask a question? Some of the jurors designate their funds to go to others. How are y'all going to handle that? We have, on this list, we also have listed of everyone that we have donations to go to. What will happen is, is we'll have to keep up with the donations, and then say, once a month in commissioners' court, they will approve those donations to be paid.
We do a warrant, just like we don't do on any bill, to pay your organization, whoever's, you know, run through court and get approved that way.
Thank you, sir. That was another issue we dealt with. But a lot of thought has gone into this one, but it's just an issue we weren't expecting. Any other questions from the commissioner?
Can I ask a quick question? Do we know who wrote these checks?
No.
No. They're from up north. You know how the banks have now went to a mobile deposit where you can take a picture of a check?
Yeah.
We think what they did is they made the checks at home, in which they knew, the bank in Tupelo, our bank in Tupelo knew immediately, they weren't ours, because the way the check was designed, and it only had one signature, so they knew right then, all these aren't good. But then they just take a picture of it and mobile deposit it. So those banks up there are the ones that are going to have to get their money back.
Does anybody hear a motion?
I'd like to motion approve what we can in jury case, for consideration of jury fund.
Motion for that. Commissioner Black, one for a second.
I'll second, sure.
Second, I'd like to make a motion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. Next item, consider take action to exempt the Busch Hove from present day. Yes, I have a tractor Busch Hove that hasn't been used since I've been there, and I've been told it's been sitting there years and years and years, and what do you think to get rid of, get another piece of equipment for that, but pretty much out of it, and try to sell it at auction this weekend.
I'll pay fifty dollars for it.
Okay.
Seventy-five. Seventy-five.
Okay, is your motion to approve?
The next motion, then we approve.
Commissioner Carter, is that second?
I'll second.
Second, I'd like to make a motion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. Next item, consider take action to declare surplus. Four thirty-nine, thirty-four, we have a tractor Busch Hove from present day. Yes, I have a tractor Busch Hove that hasn't been used since I've been there, and I've been told it's been sitting there years and years and years, and what do you think to get rid of, get another piece of equipment for that, but pretty much out of it, and try to sell it at auction this weekend.
I'll pay fifty dollars for it.
Okay.
Seventy-five. Seventy-five.
Okay, is your motion to approve?
The next motion, then we approve.
Commissioner Carter, is that second?
I'll second.
Second, I'd like to make a motion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. All right, consider take items, take action to approve a budget amendment, line item transfers.
Y'all do have, it is line item transfers. Y'all do have a copy of those in your packet. These were done as of the end of March. We'll look at it again in the middle of the month, and if any more need to be made, we'll make those.
Questions? Does I hear motion be approved?
My commotion will approve the adjustments.
Commissioner Carter, is that second?
Second.
Second, I'd like to make a motion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. All right, consider take items, take action to approve a budget amendment, line item transfers.
Y'all do have, it is line item transfers. Y'all do have a copy of those in your packet. These were done as of the end of March. We'll look at it again in the middle of the month, and if any more need to be made, we'll make those.
Questions? Does I hear motion be approved?
My commotion will approve the adjustments.
Commissioner Carter, is that second?
Second.
Second, I'd like to make a motion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. All right, consider take items, take action to approve a budget amendment, line item transfers.
Y'all do have a copy of those in your packet. These were done as of the end of March. We'll look at it again in the middle of the month, and if any more need to be made, we'll make those.
Questions? Does I hear motion be approved?
My commotion will approve the adjustments.
Commissioner Carter, is that second?
Second.
Second, I'd like to make a motion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed.
I think that was Kelly.
That's Kelly.
Kelly, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Y'all sound like similar. Next item, consider take action to approve in the paper of accounts.
Y'all had those since Friday, should have had a chance to review those. In the reports I sent y'all, it shows how much we're paying out of the operating account, so not anything unusual there.
My commotion will pay the accounts, please.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion, Carter, is that second? Is that second? Second, I'd like to make a motion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed.
I think that was Kelly.
That's Kelly.
Kelly, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Y'all sound like similar. Next item, consider take action to approve in the paper of accounts.
Y'all had those since Friday, should have had a chance to review those. In the reports I sent y'all, it shows how much we're paying out of the operating account, so not anything unusual there.
My commotion will pay the accounts, please.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion, Carter, is that second?
I'll second.
Second, I'd like to make a motion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. And that just sounds like we're in a meeting. Thanks for coming.
My commotion, Lieutenant.
I'll second. My commotion, second.
All right. 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 All right.